I'm Mayor Matt Girding, call the March 17th, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Somersworth through order. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin?
Yep.
Vincent?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Karidi Kettenzero?
Here.
Witham?
Here.
Mishu?
Here.
Sorry. Goodwin?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
And Barry?
Here.
Right. Counselor Peppin will lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indiquina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Allnabuck, the people who have stewarded Indiquina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We have one tonight for Resolution 43-25, which is a vote to authorize the city manager to file an application to the state revolving fund for a loan to fund wastewater facility improvements. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak towards Resolution 43-25? Looking to speak. Seeing none, that will close our public hearing on Resolution 43-25. Next up is item five, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city managers, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Thank you. If you could state your name and the ward in which you live, that would be great.
Good evening. Jeremy Rhodes, Ward Two. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am predictably after last session here to speak around the dog control ordinance that was on the board there. If I could distribute a couple items?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. At the previous...I had mentioned a single city in New Hampshire.
Do remember you'll need to be on mic when you speak. Thank you. Apologies.
Think I'd have learned that by now. At the previous session, I mentioned a single city in New Hampshire that had a true leash law in place. That was Nashua. At that time, I did not have the date that that ordinance had been placed into their ordinances. Since that time, I've done a little bit of additional research. What I've sent through each end of the council folks here are four cities in New Hampshire with true leash laws in place, ones which do not permit voice control as a lawful means of control. Nashua's was in place in 2019. I also quoted here Manchester's, which was put in place in 2000, Portsmouth in 2005, and Rochester in 1995. My intent in putting these out there is that one of the main concerns around the possibility of adoption of a true ordinance here in the city was the possibility of the city being sued. As Mr. Goodwin put it, this is America, you can get sued for pretty much anything. But the fact that these laws have been in place in one case for 30 years, another for 25, and another for 20, and in one, in the fourth case for six years, they've remained on the books, they have not been struck, I would hope would give some degree of comfort that they will stand. One of these dates back to when I graduated from high school. That's not too long time for an ordinance to not be challenged. We are at a point where if the ordinance, as it's been proposed, is voted for tonight, we'll have placed a law or an ordinance on the city books that does not truly resolve an issue. It simply codifies a means of control which is not a means of control. I would urge the council to strike against this ordinance, not vote it up, and in the future, return to this and actually put in place a means of control in the city that does resolve an issue, as opposed to allowing one to remain standing with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back. Please come on up. Again, if you could state your name and the ward in which you live, that would be much appreciated.
Jeff Bass, Ward One. Councilman, Mayor Girding, good evening. In the coming months, you will deliberate on the 2025 proposed budget for our city. I would hope that you would carefully weigh the financial impact that the recent citywide reevaluation has had on the Somersworth taxpayers. It goes without saying that the homeowners on fixed incomes have been disproportionately affected, and any tax rate increase could be devastating. And the issue with those living in mobile home communities, like my 82-year-old mother, is their assessed valuations rose approximately 150%. This was for their building values only. The land portion, which is assessed to the park owner, will most likely be passed along to the residents in their monthly lot rent. This will only enhance the frustration and the anxiety that many people currently feel. The sentiment in the years, in previous years, by the council members was that a dollar increase to the tax rate was generally acceptable. It's my opinion that this is not acceptable, and it's not sustainable. If this mentality prevails, I foresee a significant increase in the foreclosure rate and the inability to attract the next generation of hilltoppers to our community. To that end, the time has come to impose the following: a moratorium on new hires, a reduction in workforce through attrition, and possibly layoffs. Capital improvement programs should be delayed and reprioritized. All contracts and collective bargaining agreements should be revetted, and every budget line item should be scrutinized. I realize that the task before you is complicated, and that you must strike a balance when adopting a budget. However, I think it's pretty clear that for this year, we've already taken it on the chin, and therefore I recommend a 0% increase for the 2025 tax budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, come on up. Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and the ward in which you live, please.
Name's Steve Dow. I'm in Ward One. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fairly new to the city, so I'm gonna kind of back up on the budget, and I just want to kind of understand a little bit more. I know it's difficult, and I kind of feel, as the last gentleman's, that, you know, tough times here. It's not easy on you, I'm sure. But just to get an idea, in the past, I've lived in towns, and in towns, some of the towns that I have been in, in New Hampshire and other places, when we did budgeting, what we did was we usually had a meeting or meetings where, because sometimes it's tough for you to give a proposed budget in, you know, certain instances, and sometimes you can take more flack for it, but they would at least propose something, or some things, or things that could be cut, or things that could be discussed. And what we'd usually do as a town was we were able to, and probably you could do it as a city, I don't know the rules on the difference, you know, differences, but we would get together and we would discuss, okay, maybe we can cut this, maybe we need, what we'd want to add here, and you could have voting items, and we have a special vote, and you'd have maybe one or two or three items, maybe one to do with schools, maybe several to do with other things, and then people, it'd be put a vote, and it kind of takes a little bit of pressure off of you, and it puts it back on the people if they don't do what you recommend. That's just a comment, and that's for you guys, and maybe it's not possible. I don't know in the city formal government. I'm not very familiar with it, except out of state, when my job moved me far, far away. I'd like to know, looking on the site, it's kind of hard to find things, and I know things are developing fast and furious after the evaluation. I wasn't very happy with the evaluation, I'll say that, but, you know, it's life, and I do feel for the people that are less fortunate than myself, so, you know, that'll be said. But I'm trying to read my own notes here, so bear with me a little bit. I was wondering, okay, what impacts does the, you know, the current stool funding lawsuits that the state has against it from other towns and cities have with what you're doing? I mean, you just gotta kind of like deal with it, or is it something that you have to plan for regardless and assume the worst? Maybe that's, you know, you don't have to answer it necessarily, but, you know, because I saw the budget, and it looked like that they were providing the bare minimum in one of the lawsuits, which was $7,700 per student, but only for the state, that is, through how their various means of giving it to you, only for, you know, disabled children in the school system. They were gonna stay around $4,000, I guess, for the rest. So I'd keep an eye on that, because it's in the state's district Supreme Court now. The 2024-25 budget that I found was around $51,743,000. I believe, is that correct? Nods will do. Doesn't have to be exactly. And is the proposal, is there like a tax cap or something that limits you to how much it can go above that? Okay. So what's it around 5% or something like that?
Unfortunately, we're unable to have a dialogue back and forth.
Okay, I'm sorry.
As that is.
Forgive me, nods. Okay, I'm sorry.
Maybe counselors, when they have their opportunity to comment, will comment.
I apologize. I'm new to this, and I'm not very good at public speaking. And how many taxpayer households are there in the city? According to the 2020 census, there were 5,242. Does anyone really know that? Okay, that's an idea that I can't answer. All right. And I assume it's probably higher now, but I'm not sure. And taxpayer contribution to the budget was something that I wondered, I don't know if we contribute as taxpayers to just the school portion, or that plus something. It's not clear to me, and I wish it was, on the site. I think that would be good if you could, some of these questions, if they were a little more readily available, might be easier for people to understand what's going on. And I was wondering also the business-to-state contribution, because it looks like we have some good businesses here, which is excellent. I think drawing that in here was a good draw for myself, moving here recently. But, you know, I hope they're paying their fair share, because my last town I was in really, really pulled Walmart to pay a lot of money. So that could help. I hope this was helpful. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Anybody else who would like to make comment this evening? Yes, come on up. Again, if you could state your name and the ward in which you live.
I feel like I might be up here too much. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, esteemed members of City Council and your honor, Mr. Mayor. I come before you tonight as both an engaged citizen and the leader of our Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to express my concern and disappointment in the inaction of this governing body and my hope for a way forward. In a couple of weeks, this group will convene for another budget workshop. Some of you may remember that I came before council last year, along with fellow nonprofits requesting city support. While most requests received some funding at least, mine was initially denied, reintroduced at half the amount, which was less than $2,000, and then ultimately denied again. It was at this meeting that a council member posed a query I will not soon forget. What does the chamber even do for this city? Aren't they a business designed to support other businesses? Why would we even give a business money like that? Now, this is not a direct quote, of course, but rest assured, it's right here. It stayed. As one might imagine, this left me with some thoughts. I was a little offended and a lot frustrated at the lack of support I was getting from my own city. But in the wake of that frustration, rather than letting it deter me from my path, I chose to work even harder to demonstrate the chamber's value to this community. In the months that followed, I took a deep dive into our organization, reevaluated our membership, needs, strategy, and that ultimately led to a complete overhaul of our chamber. We redeveloped our programming, reestablished relationships, and even changed our name to better reflect our mission. I have some documentation with me that I've given you all before this, outlining our program and our programming and vision for the community connection that you all have, and I hope you'll read. Please note the community-to-member-event ratio. Now, I hesitate to share this next piece, because it is by no means the flex, as young people would say. But I have spent most of the last year doing this job, sometimes 60 hours a week, at great personal cost, that cost being that I've been without a steady paycheck. Two weeks ago, I just got the first paycheck I've seen since October, with no indication in sight of when the next will come. Please understand that this is not to garner sympathy or accolades, but to demonstrate my dedication to the mission of this important organization and to the city and its economic well-being. So what's going on with the chamber? Why is it failing? What are we doing? In a word, it's disengagement. Now, I cannot speak to the work of my predecessors, who I firmly believe did everything they could to support this chamber to the very best of their abilities. But this chamber was flailing when I stepped into this role, and without the staff, resources, or support I've needed, I have to tell you, it's been near impossible to get much new programming off the ground. Perhaps the Chamber of Commerce just isn't needed here. I'm here to tell you this, that when our tax bills came out recently, which we're all hearing about still, and entirely, and the entirety of local social media was rife with misinformation about City Hall raking our taxpayers over the coals, I saw in those posts an opportunity to educate, and I responded with facts and an offer of civics programming for all. I stood in support of a city that does not support my organization, my work, or me as a person, because it was the right thing to do. Now, I come before you to ask for your help in demonstrating to our business leaders the vital role the chamber plays in the fostering of economic growth. You see, it was no surprise that once the city showed its lack of confidence in the chamber last year, that businesses would soon follow suit, and they did. How could they not? So now, if this overhaul does not work, which by the way, this is my fourth-quarter hail mary, guys, there will be no chamber here. I can get another job, but I don't want one. A city without a thriving chamber to spur and support a growing business community, it doesn't thrive. It doesn't grow, businesses fail, they leave, and eventually, those main streets become a ghost town. We could just fall away and tuck quietly under the umbrella of the Dover Chamber. We would never see another event here. And that's been suggested before, but that's literally where we're headed if we continue to take no action. Look, I believe in the potential of Somersworth, and I believe that all of you share in that belief. I believe in the power of community and collaboration, and that together we can create a vibrant, thriving city where businesses flourish and residents prosper. We must take action now to preserve what we have built and to make room for future growth. I ask for your support, your thoughts, and your commitment to working with me and this chamber to make Somersworth the beacon of economic growth and community spirit that we all know it can be. Let us all move forward and work together to build a brighter future for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that. I'm on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, name's Riley Bacon, and I wouldn't be where I am today without chamber and groups like Somersworth Festival Association. Coming from out of town, this is actually the longest place I've lived in my adult life, and I've built relationships with tons of community members who, yeah, unfortunately, don't see the value in the Chamber of Commerce, but it allows people who aren't from here to explore more options than what's just in front of their face. We cover five different communities, which helps a lot to bolster that, foster that networking and allowing people to understand what we do. I just wanted to throw that out there, and I'm thankful for the chamber.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, come on up. Again, if you could state your name and the ward in which you live.
Alan Markey, 5 Rulo Drive, Somersworth, New Hampshire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Matt Girding and council. Once sat up there in those chairs for 13 years on the planning board, so I'm very familiar with a lot about this city and businesses and whatnot. I'm just gonna read some facts here. I don't want anybody to be insulted or embarrassed. These are things that I thought about. It's, you know, it's kind of been on my mind, what's going on, this whole assessment thing, the taxes, and as a couple other people just mentioned, the bleeding has to stop. It really does. And I just want to say some things here. City is a city of 10 square miles, hasn't grown. We're not bigger, we're not traveling further, vehicles, whatever. It's a city of 12,239 people. It's pegged to go up 0.38% to 12,286 people in '25. That's not a big, that's not a terrible lot of growth. When you have a lot of growth, then you start looking at things, okay, well, it costs more for this, costs more for that. So relatively speaking, we've been pretty much the same here for the last 10 years. But I have some questions. Rollinswood leaves the school system, 80 students. I don't remember any adjustments being made. Maybe I'm wrong, but please correct me. All they wanted was a seat at the table they never got. It's not your fault, it might be the other board, I don't know. It's water over the dam. Rollinswood just left the SAU district. I would think we're getting some money there, aren't we? I would hope. There's a cost factor there, so you guys are gonna have to make the deep dive into looking at a lot of this stuff. And what I've seen, the school population is going down in Somersworth overall. Now, I remember some years ago, a lot of you people weren't even in these seats, and we had a big meeting at the high school. Bud Jones got up there and rah rah rah, we gotta have a new high school, we gotta do all this. Yeah, invest in your schools, that's great. I think the school was supposed to be built out at 750 kids. Well, I can tell you right now, I've looked at the Department of Revenue, school system, you got 390 kids there. We're not going up, folks. We're going down. Why the tax rate isn't going down? I don't know, but really, that needs to be looked into, big time. The other thing is, there is some state funding that they're being talking about there in Concord. I think presently, Somersworth gets, what, 4,100 a kid? And they're looking at 7,700? So somebody needs to be really putting the pedal to the metal on that one. That's a lot, and that's gonna help things. I don't know, get the state reps involved, whatever. Another thing, love these guys back here, the firefighters. I just don't agree on how that whole fire station came about. It started out with a committee. You guys looked at Berwick, five to six million. Don't quote me, I think I'm in the right ballpark. When I say $12 million, that's almost building an elementary school. Maybe I'm wrong. Let's throw the soils in there. I hear there's a soil issue there. I don't know. Maybe you guys, maybe it's 10 million, maybe it's 11. I don't know. I'm glad these guys are being taken care of, right? You never know when you're gonna need them. I think they do a great job. I'm glad they have a beautiful facility, but with COVID and everything, I don't think it was the right time to really push it through. I thought it should have been put off a couple years, but like I said, that's water over the dam as well. Your capital improvements project right now, I was looking at that, your five-year outlay, and you're looking at, what, $2 to $3 increase over that five-year outlay? Well, when you start adding in salaries and health costs, and that's, you know, that's normal, I get it. I'll pay my $400, $500, $600 a year in increase. I get it. That's life. Whether you're working at the Navy Yard or the city of Somersworth, whatever, it's just part of life. The other thing I have a little bit of heartache is being a former planning board member, I start looking at from Stripe Nine down, and I almost get the feeling it's like Little Detroit, and you take that right to Main Street. That is just, that looks terrible. Somebody needs to do something. If people don't want to take care of their property, maybe they should be taxed heavily. Maybe we need to look at doing things different for those type of people, because they are actually taking advantage of the people that might have nicer homes, that are really getting it. The other thing is the assessments. I'm not even gonna go into that too much, but I had a 20% increase in one year. I can afford it. I have a decent job. But where I'm working, I don't even know if I'm gonna have a job pretty soon. We're not in really good times right now. People on pins and needles. You know, we were quoted here, probably two or three months ago, an average 300 to 500 increase. Well, I'm looking at 2,200, and then if you actually raise the taxes this year, it's compounded, so it's really a lot more than 2,000. And I think you guys should look into the business part of it. I remember not too long ago, Mr. Bellmore might have more information on this, the city and Velcro went to court. Fortunately, the city won. The city was undertaxing Velcro. I think you really need to look at the box doors, because I've been doing a lot of research with my tax card and looking at properties, and it just doesn't seem like things are adding up there. Here's my last part of this speech, getting back on track. I believe we should have a five-year hiring freeze. No hires, replace positions after it's being assessed if you really need the position. I would do a three-year budget outlay. Fiscal year '24-'25, 0%, '25-'26, 1%, '26-'27, 2%. I would also review all the departments and look at contracting things out, or at least feeling the temperature, where privatization is and where we are. And I've been through this before in another city, so I know all about it. But it's a good way to gauge where you are and what the taxpayers are getting for their money. And I would really think about moving to a town formal government. Let the people decide the big expenditures. Why put yourselves in that position? Let's go to the high school in March, and let's vote. They do it in many cities and towns in this state, much bigger than Somersworth. So if you want to take, you know, the purchasing power out of your hands, and you can say, hey, look at the people voted for this. I'd also look at pairing up with other communities in the county. Fire department, you know, here would be a good one. Air packs, coats for the firefighters of Dover, Rochester, Somersworth, all put out a bid. If you're buying 150 coats, it's probably gonna be much cheaper, maybe a better quality. So maybe you guys are doing that, I don't know, but I'm just thinking out of the box. You need to start looking at things like that.
Alan Markey, I apologize. You are at your five minutes. I do want-
I'd like to make a motion, you're-
Thank you. Motion to-
To suspend council rules so that one of the residents can continue speaking.
Checked by Counselor Mishu. Again, if you're in favor, you'll state by saying yes. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. You may continue.
Thank you, thank you. I'm almost done. The other thing, too, is the budget process starts at zero. I think there's a perception out there, you know, and I don't know if it's with you people on the school board, because there's a consumer price index of four or three, whatever it may be, that that's the zero. A zero budget starts at zero, and then you build up. It used to be a dollar, the Jimmy Macklin days, right? Whatever, that's what everybody expected. You should start at zero. And trust me, folks, I don't want to see anybody lose their jobs, but a lot of people are hurting here in this city, and I feel real bad for a lot of people. I can suck it up, you know. Some people can't. Some people might have, you know, $100 to spare to go buy groceries for the month. So really, guys, and I feel for you, you know. It's a tough job. You hear it from people, I'm sure you hear it outside of here. I've heard it from a lot of people, and I don't even sit there. It's like, you know what? I'm a hypocrite if I don't come up here and say something. I'm here, I like all of you, I wish you well. I know you got a tough job, but just remember, in two or three weeks, I'm sure we're gonna get lambasted with the school people saying, you know, this, that, it happens every year. You gotta think about the people that are paying the bills, because remember, it's the reputation here of this city. If this taxes is so high that people can't even come here, they're paying a mortgage payment for their taxes? You ain't gonna get anybody here. You're not gonna get young people here. You gotta think about it. And those people that are complaining that saying, we gotta get more, and we gotta get more, well, you know what? There's gonna be a point where you're gonna lose your job, because we don't have the tax base to support you anyways. So people need to think about what's real and what's affordable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Others wishing to give public comment this evening? Yes, again, thank you. If you could state your name and the ward in which you live.
Hi. Sarah Lavoie, Ward Four. As most of you know, I've been up here a few times discussing the dog issue. But what actually has made me want to come up and talk tonight has been everybody else that I've listened to. The budget is obviously a much larger issue than the dog leash laws. I mean, I feel it, we feel it. I work in education, my husband in education and research, both of which are very tentative right now. right now, so I understand where everyone is coming from. But I just wanna hearken back to, I think, what Counselor Bellmore did last week, which was bring in a big disk. Was it, oh, it was you, I'm sorry, Mr. Widdham. Anyway, you brought in a disk and said, this is all the problems, these are the ones we can deal with, this small little disk. And I'm just sitting back, and I will admit, I had not been made aware that no changes were going to be made to the leash laws, that at-large was going to continue to include voice control, which is obviously what I am against. And I'm, I'm sitting here going, why can't we just make this? And I know you can't answer this right now, but maybe somebody could answer it for me. Why can't we make this one small change, which will make a huge impact on some people's lives? It would absolutely make a huge impact on my life. Again, my dog has been attacked a dozen times, and if that happens now with one off-leashed, off-leash, at-large dog who is supposedly under voice control, it could literally burst his tumor, which he has been carrying for a year, and kill him. That would cause me great trauma. So again, I hearken it back to Mr. Widdham's disk. Why can't we make this one small change? Take care of it, and, and then leave you guys to deal with the big business of the budget? So hopefully, somebody can at least answer that for me, and I appreciate all the work you are doing on both of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, please come on up. Again, if you could state your name and the ward in which you live.
Good evening, my name is Dan Reynard. I live at 207 Blackwater Road in Somersworth here, and I thank you all for your time. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you guys for being here, I appreciate your time. I just had a couple items that I'd like to present to you. First is housing, we know that that's a big, that's probably the biggest issue in our state right now, right? So, just presenting that. I own Squeegee Clean, it's a window cleaning business, and we've been in business for 25 years. It's a seasonal window cleaning business, so spring through fall, late, late fall, we're very busy, but in the winter months, it's slow. We value blue collar workers. We need people to come into our company and train them and have them work here in our town and in our seacoast region. So housing is an issue for us. I have my crew chief, he had to move to Shapley, Maine, and he commutes in. So, anything that you guys are able to do to help attack that issue is always something that I'm grateful for. With our taxes, I don't have any issue with reassessment, because we all know for, for a long time that, generally speaking, our housing has been undervalued, but the tax rate has been high enough so that it all comes out in the wash. But I think where a lot of us citizens really have taken the hit is that, that percentage rate has not kinda helped us out either, right? It's still pretty high. So, I don't care that my house got assessed at something higher, that's fair, that is fair. I mean, the comps around the area, we, we know what housing is going for, so I'm not here to, to work you guys over on any of that. Just reconsider the percentage, if you would, that would sure help us out a whole lot and would go a long way. The second item is, I'm, I'm thinking about growth. How, how am I gonna grow as a company? I'd like to possibly build a garage with maybe an apartment above it to possibly be maybe low-income for employee housing or something like that. I'm trying to think of solutions myself of how I can keep our employees here in the area. So, I, I would really, and I know my neighbor who couldn't be here tonight, she had to work, who lives at 209 Blackwater, she's thinking about possibly building something out on the back of her property, which a butt 16B. My property also butt 16B, if you go on the other side there. It would be nice, she said that the ADU is now at like 800 square feet, she believes, and she asked that I just present to you guys if it's possible to go to 1,000? Is it possible to, to make that kind of adjustment that could make, make her life a little easier as well, as she's thinking about going into her retirement years? But those are just the things that are on my mind, and it's my first time for, to come to a council meeting, so I do, I'm in positions of leadership in different places as well, so I respect you guys, I know it's, it's a hard job, and a lot of times, most of what you hear is complaints, but we do appreciate you and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to make public comment this evening? Anybody else? All right, I think that'll move us on. Brings us to item six, which is approval of the consent calendar. The chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to accept.
Thank you. This includes minutes of the city council meeting on March 3rd. Counselor Widdham moves that the consent calendar be approved as presented, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Question for the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, eyes have it, consent calendar is adopted. Brings us to item seven, which is comments by city councillors. Are there comments by councillors this evening? First up, we'll have Counselor Vincent, then Counselor Widdham.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for the citizens coming out and voicing your concerns about the budget. You know that I've been an advocate probably since day one, since I got here, of trying to maintain a somewhat affordable budget. I wanna say that probably since I've been here, we've gone over the tax cap a couple of times that I have not been interested in. I believe that the citizens and our constituents from the city came out and came up with a tax cap for reasons. One being, it's not an open checkbook, and I think it's time that we buckle down. I understand that we're at somewhere with the tax cap, somewhere 50 cents or more. However, I still think that a 0% increase can be done if it's planned with resurfacing. And I've had some comments, I mean, I, this isn't something I'm going into alone, I've talked with the city manager and other councillors, and they feel that, that the, that the money won't be put into road resurfacing, which is so important. I'm not trying to get away from that, but you know, some comments have made, made that once you get away from road resurfacing, you'll never visit again. Well, I, I don't believe that. I believe that road resurfacing is so important to your community, for safe roads, for development, and keeping the value of the city itself up. This is gonna be sec, this is gonna be part two of my budget talk, and this is gonna revolve mostly around the schools. And I'm gonna have to say some things that aren't gonna be liked. I'm a very nice person, I'm very generous. I'm very generous with my own money from my company in this city, because the money that we spend here when we do a budget is not my money, it's everyone out there that lives here's money. So I'm very cognate about that. I'm a nice person, I, I really don't wanna talk bad, but let's just remember one thing. Business is business and friendship is friendship. And I learned a long time ago in the eighties, when I graduated, don't cross the line. So here we go. The school, being this, being the superintendent and the committee, wants a $2 million increase. I don't know. I just know that in years past, we had a mayor and a superintendent that had a good hold on what the school was doing. And then all of a sudden, we had a problem. May have been an issue with our mayor with not behaving correctly, I guess, having inappropriate behavior, whatever that may be. They took action on that. But you see, the fallout took down our, our past superintendent, which I didn't, it didn't sit with me well then. So now we have a new superintendent, and we have our school board. By the way, our school board makes all the decisions, it gives direction to our superintendent. We can't fill some of those seats. So I start looking at what's going on. This has been on my mind for a while. I start thinking, wow, there's actually been school board members who resigned prior to their term. Three, four maybe, to be exact, I think it was three, please don't quote me on that. They came before us and gave us letters of concern on how the chairman, which I'm gonna say right outright, Maggie Larson, wasn't playing the game, so to speak, wasn't going by the rules, being heavy-handed, being a dictator in some cases. Well, is our superintendent being, the strings being pulled by, by the, by the school board? I'm not sure. All I know is there's been things that have been said from the school board that have been not true, deceiving, packing the house here to try to get us to give educational funding money when we already paid for it. I'm not happy with it. I'm not giving the school anything more than what is gonna be in the cap. Oh, I'm gonna get phone calls, and I'm gonna get some heat, and maybe we'll see some more people here next month, but this is how I feel, and this counselor will sit here and tell you this. I'm not afraid to tell you what's going on here. It's better than maybe some of the councillors that aren't sitting back and not saying anything. And I urge all of you to say something on this, because the price keeps going up. What are we getting? Are we getting more? We lost kids six years ago, a ton of kids from, they went to Marshwood, they, they didn't wanna be involved in Rollinsford. Look, like I said, I'm not the mean man against the schools, but maybe we should get an independent company to go through our schools and reevaluate the schools. Not a school-related person or employee, not a city-related, an independent company. So, we heard from the superintendent that schools are under, under target. Yeah, they're under target because there's a price that we don't know what is gonna come up with, and it can't be justified. Look, the things that can be justified is this. Insurance cost goes up, electricity goes up, we have, we have contracts we have to face, I get that, but we've had no reduction in what we've had for less students. Those are my thoughts. I would be doing disjustice in this seat for Ward Two if I didn't bring the things forward that some of my constituents want me to say, and they know that I'm not afraid to say it. It's, it's tough. Like I said, this isn't friendship, this is business, all of our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Widdham, you are next.
Almost 45 minutes into the meeting, and there is a lot to unpackage already. Everything from ADUs to the budget to disengagement from the community, there's a lot of things to, to unpackage here. To our form of government, and I'll start there. So, yeah, Somersworth is a city form of government. It is a form of government that has nothing to do with your population, it is a form of government. There are 13 cities here in New Hampshire, I could rattle them off if you want to, but I'll save that. Everybody else is a town form of government. City form of government is a representative form of government, like, much like our state legislature or U.S. Congress, where you vote people in to make those decisions. Many towns, in their town form of government, have a town meeting, where people actually go to a gymnasium and vote, but not every town. Some towns, by way of their charter, have more of a representative form of government that looks like this. They're called town councillors versus selectmen. So, a lot on the way that our government is formed. And then within that are the school departments. In the city form of governments, with one exception, the city councils have bottom-line authority over the school budget. We can't tell them to pay for teachers, or ban uniforms, or lights at the field, we can just give them a bottom line. The one exception to that is the city of Concord, where the school board is an independent body from the city council, and actually votes on that bottom line for the, for the school budget. So they're kinda separated there by city charter. Yes, Somersworth looked at, going back to a town form of government back in 2008, 2009, there was a Charter Review Commission, I happened to be on that, happened to chair it. There were lots and lots of meetings, lots and lots of debate. It actually went in, in front of voters for a bunch of charter amendments, but the idea to stay with the city was thought to be the best course of action at that time. So to the extent of how our process works here, our, our budget ordinance will be introduced tonight. May I, Counselor Goodwin? Counselor Goodwin has our budget ordinance here. That is the city manager's proposed budget, which is all of the departments of the city, fire, police, public works, our two enterprise funds, water, wastewater, I guess I could throw in there, our Blue Bag Program, that's sort of an enterprise fund as well. And then there's a small section in there, which is the school department, which is basically the bottom line with a little bit of data around that, because only we have bottom-line authority over the school department budget. It'll get introduced tonight, it'll be laid on the table until we have a budget workshop in early April, and then at our first council meeting in April, after it perhaps being removed from the table, it is at that point in time that the council can take action to make amendments. Much like in a town where people would make floor amendments or things of that nature, except it's done from these chairs up here. And we go through that process, the amendments either pass or fail, and then ultimately, the budget is voted on by the council as a whole, and it requires a supermajority to pass the budget, which is six votes, right? So, that process may happen at the first meeting in April, it may take to the second meeting of April, may lapse into May, potentially even into June, though I've never seen that. Typically, we like to make the decision quicker than that. But if the council can't get six votes by the end of June, the book that I just held up, the city manager's proposed budget, is adopted automatically by city charter. So just a little bit of how the journey goes here. There will be a formal public hearing on the budget, as many people did tonight, come up and talk about the budget, we appreciate that. I think this is the most common I've gotten on a budget since I've been on the city council. It, it never happens, right? You might hear someone on the street, someone might stop you on your road and say, hey, can we drop the tax rate down? I love to hear that, but then I like specifics. Give me some ideas. We heard a few specific ideas here this evening that we collectively can discuss. You've heard me say many times that I hate the budget process, because there are no winners in this process, right? If we, no matter what we decide, we're gonna limit on what we do. Not funding enough positions, not paving enough roads, not having enough streetlights, you name it, not having new uniforms for athletic teams, not having a paraprofessional in a classroom at the school, you name it, no matter what we adopt for a budget, there's gonna be a lack of something. And no matter what we adopt for a budget, people are gonna be impacted on their taxes. Tell me where there's a winner in that. There isn't, right? So it is, thank you everybody for recognizing this is not an enviable spot, I get it, that's why I run, we'll make the unpopular decision, because it is an unpopular decision for somebody, right? No one is ever happy with the budget. I've never seen it, right? We sort of, I don't know, tolerate it at the end of the day, right? Much like we do a lot of things in life, we, we tolerate it. Our level of tolerance is less currently, I think, right? Because we've just been through a revaluation, so that lowers our level of tolerance. I get it. And I think it is true that those that live in manufactured homes, in our mobile home parks, they're impacted disproportionately, as has been stated. I- I, I see that, I understand that. It's gonna be a tough budget to navigate because of that tolerance that has been levied upon us by the reassessment. The reassessment process is not a process that we vote for. It happens automatically by state law. And contractor assessors do that work, there's an appeal process, and again, we, we could talk all about that. But that's, that's sort of the budget process. Impacting us more here in New Hampshire, and again, we heard that some have traveled here from out of state. How do we raise our taxes here in Somersworth? How do we pay for the services, some of which we can see represented in the room here tonight? How do we pay for our schools? It is largely through property tax assessment. There is some money that comes from the state and federal government. That is a very, very small portion. We know here in New Hampshire that our state is dead last in what it contributes to education. It is 50 by a long shot out of 50 states. So we don't get a lot of money from the state. We get a little bit of money through things like auto registrations and building permits and things like that. But in the overall scheme of our budget, which is in the $50 million-plus range, most of it is borne by our taxpayers. We don't have a sales tax like Maine or Massachusetts. We don't have an income tax like Maine or Massachusetts. We have a property tax. The rubber meets the road here in this room when we go through the budget process. It's just really, really tough. I share every year at the budget time that what creates the difficulty and the angst around our budget here is the way that we tax our residents here in the state of New Hampshire. It's not an equitable tax, right? It's an agrarian form of tax. Back in the day, hundreds of years ago, a man was measured by, his worth was measured by the amount of land that he owned, because you could farm it, log it, do all of those sorts of things. It's not how we live anymore. So, a property tax is really not an equitable tax. It, it impacts people unfairly. But, thank you for bringing up my circle of concern, my circle of influence. We've tried to influence getting help from the state for decades and decades and decades. And it doesn't matter if we have a Democratic governor, a Republican governor, Democratic-leaning state legislature, Republican-leaning state legislature, it never happens. We can't get out of our own way. There have been lawsuits around education, probably since I've been alive, and I'm 59 years old. And there'll be lawsuits around education when I die someday, right? We will never solve this problem here in New Hampshire. I'm convinced of that, right? It's just not gonna happen, right? Can beat our heads against the wall, we can write letters to Concord, thank you Mayor, we write one every year, right? And we did prior, right? It doesn't matter, doesn't matter. I've given up on the hope. I'll sign the letter, makes sense, but I don't think anybody reads it there, right? You tell I don't like the budget process, right? Housing, yeah, our housing needs have changed here in the city. We need 700 units. There's a lot being built up here on Green Street right now. We are, in fact, looking at our zoning ordinances. Thank you Mayor Girding for putting together the Mayor's Housing Task Force, which I sit on along with Counselor Goodwin. We have made some substantial progress there. In fact, tonight is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding accessory dwelling units, right? In our ordinance, as it exists now, they have to be attached to the residents. We're looking to detach them. Maybe we look to increase their square footage. I think that makes a lot of sense. Is it because we have a higher population? No! Our population is relatively stagnant here in the city. But the number of housing units is in demand. People say, how can that be if your population hasn't changed, the way people live? When I went to Somersworth High School, yeah, there were 700 and something students, is now like shy of 400. Families today are one or two, maybe a kid. Back when I went to high school, families were four, five, six kids, right? Population hasn't changed, but the way in which people live has changed. So we need those housing units. As we go through the budget process, I, I think accurate data is important. So as we throw out numbers, let's try to be as accurate as we can, whether it's the number of students that left from Rollinsford, our school population, our city population, or the price of our fire station, which was on budget at $9 million. Now, yes, we have a pile of dirty dirt that we still don't know the price tag of that, so that's a fair add, but it's sitting there waiting for someone to say what we can do with it, we don't know. But it came in under budget, slightly under budget at $9 million. The last thing I'll speak to, because we heard the word, and it's a pretty powerful word, is the word disengagement. And I'm not sure that I'll disagree that there is disengagement in our society. Disengagement from elected officials, perhaps, disengagement from businesses in a chamber, perhaps, disengagement from parents to help with youth athletics. And I'll share a recent story. So for 16 years, I've run the Babe Ruth baseball program here in Somersworth. My son hasn't played Babe Ruth baseball for 10 years. Finally, this year, because I wanna umpire more college baseball and I just need more time to do that, I've decided that I'm not gonna run the Babe Ruth baseball program anymore. Made that decision back in January, and my other board members are in a similar position to me, and they said, yeah, this is the time just to, to move on and have some new blood take over. So we solicited volunteers to run the Babe Ruth baseball program in January, again at the end of January, again in February, again at the end of February, and again here in early March. I didn't have so much as a sniff of someone that wanted to do something. I'm not caving in because I have other things that I aspire to do. But I felt bad for that age group that is too old to play Little League baseball, but they're not old enough for high school. It's the middle school population, Your Honor. Good news is, our neighbors in Rochester, the Rochester Babe Ruth, said, your players can come and play here, which I was thrilled with. It took a lot of work with the, with the state commissioner and the, the national commissioner, because you gotta change boundaries and alignment, it's not just, oh yeah, go do that. But as of this past weekend, that was green-lighted. So at least our middle school-age players here in Somersworth will have a place to play. Tie it back to budgets, though. I did ask the middle school athletic director, which is the high school athletic director, Mr. Hodgson, I'm like, hey, we're in a bind, can we do middle school baseball? No money in the budget, right? So, because you have busing and all of those sorts of things. So, it's not a perfect scenario, but at least there's a landing spot. But when the word disengagement was, was used, it struck home with me over this issue. That was a rant that went in every single direction. Thank you for your time, Your Honor, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. Other Counselor comments? We have Counselor Cameron, then Counselor Barry, Gibson, Parity Catanzaro. Go ahead, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I first like to thank everybody that came out to speak about the budget tonight. And I don't want anybody to think for one second that this hasn't weighed on us heavily the minute we started talking about it, because it has. And Alan, you brought up some points that I'd been questioning over the past few years about the decline in numbers at the schools and where things could level out and maybe be cut or be a little bit easier. Nobody wants to cut positions, nobody wants to defund anything, but things do need to have a hardcore look at. So it isn't reflecting on the taxpayers any more than it already has with the assessment and everything else that's going on. We are all cognitive of that, we are all stressing about this. Mark my words on that. It's, it's going to be a heck of a budget season, absolutely. And knowing the counselors the way I know them, we are going to do our damnedest to make sure that it comes in reasonable, or if real Rose Barry is still alive, he would be here telling us, there's a tax cap, folks, do not go over it. And he would come every budget season and tell us that when he was alive. And that always echoes in the back of my mind at budget season. May he rest in peace, Rose. As far as the chamber, Bonnie, I know you have done above and beyond everything to get this chamber going, to keep it striving, to engage people. Kudos to you, honestly. You, I think you've surpassed every other chamber president that I've known in there because we've had some one-on-ones and you're amazing. You really are, okay? And don't ever forget that. And unfortunately, I wasn't here for the dog leash conversation. I have two dogs myself. And, yeah, I would like to think I could voice, control my dogs. Oh heck no. I have two puggles and Fenway gets distracted so easily. Mine are always on a leash, even with the leash, he's trying to run after something he saw or a dust bunny blowing by and he'll growl at it. So I am so sorry what has happened to you with that. And I pray that your dog moves forward and nothing happens to him, because that would break my heart as well, because I'm a dog lover. So I hope we can come to some sort of consensus with that and protect everybody's dogs out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Barry, then Gibson, then Parity Catanzaro.
All right. I'll try to keep this short because a lot of what I was going to say has already been echoed by other counselors, but I just wanted to say, I know you will be getting an update probably when we go to the standing committee. I don't want anybody to feel like we were just not dealing with the dog leash. That was brought back to committee for us to look at it further. So I will leave that until standing committees talk. I want to thank those who did come out and actually had some specific ideas for budget and what to do, because I keep saying, we have ideas, but we want to hear your ideas. You live out there, you see things. Honestly, I wish I could put little token or dollar at every pothole in the city and if you go over it and you hit it, put a dollar in, we'll fund the potholes like no problem, I feel like, right? Because I swear, everybody hits the same one. It's hard to have the funding to go everywhere. So I think you've heard from all of us that we're gonna, we take this very seriously. This is my first budget season. I'm echoing a few others where I'm not anticipating liking this at all. It's hard. I would love to be able to fund every nonprofit that wants to come and get funding because they have good things that they're doing. I want to fund everything that our city needs, but we only have so much money to do. So, one other thing I will say and then I will pass it along is just, sometimes we as the government and our taxes cannot fund everything, so I'd also look to, we also put out, somebody needs to do this, somebody needs to do that. Maybe starting to look, can I volunteer? Can I donate? Can I do something else, even if it's just my time? And just maybe that's something that we need to look into a little bit more because our budget's not gonna go as far as we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson, you're next.
I'm gonna follow Counselor Barry. A lot of what I would have to say has already been said. And I will admit right up front, I have a prejudice when it comes to the reassessment. I live in Sherwood Glen. If you're not familiar with that, that's the largest manufactured housing development in town. I have neighbors that are severely distressed by the assessments. And unlike in the past, there were alternatives for people. Didn't like what you were paying? You can go elsewhere. Well, guess what? There is no elsewhere. Unless you want to move up to Colebrook or Berlin. Great prices on housing up there. I can afford the increase, okay? I have a lot of neighbors that are wondering how they're gonna handle it, let alone if we actually go up more. So I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this. I'm gonna do my best to be fair to everybody. And I don't dislike budget season because I think that that's one of the reasons why I ran for this position is because I wanted to have an impact in a positive way on what's happening in this city. I spent 14 years on the school board, so I know the school board side as well. And without repeating some of Mr. Vincent's comments, I've been severely distressed by the schools over the last couple of years and the way things have been done. But I believe all of us want to be fair and do the best we can to make sure that we provide as much funding as possible for all the needs of the city, yet at the same time taking into account the impact it has on the residents who are footing the bill. And I know that this is a predominantly Democratic city, so that's not so much the issue. But one of the biggest forces in the world that goes on in the state of New Hampshire is the pledge. And anybody who believes in the pledge, no offense when I say this, but you're burying yourself. Because as stated, New Hampshire has the lowest state support for education in the country. And it all goes back to the fact that the state is not willing to shoulder a fair amount of the education, which the courts have told them that they aren't doing and they've fought tooth and nail. Even to the point of, they're now suing to try to get the funding overturned because of judicial overreach. God, love our state government. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parity Catanzaro, you're up.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everyone who came out. This is exactly what I always hope for in a meeting. It's people coming up and sharing what they hope to have happen. A lot of you have brought forward really helpful ideas and shared your perspectives, and we really appreciate that. I echo what Counselor Barry said, there are some really good progresses that we've made with the leash law, particularly from Jeremy and Sarah, your comments from last time and some interactions we've had with the lawyers since then. So I think we're gonna be having a public hearing on the updated version at our next meeting and we've, we've, just thank you so much for all of your research and like work and stories on that. The, I also just wanted to, in, in light of both that and some other comments about finding things on the website, I can't recommend higher to go and look at the city manager's report and not just the city council packet. It has little sort of cheat sheet notes about, you know, what's been referred to committee, where things stand and things like that. So it's, it's a really helpful thing to look at if you go to the city website, go to the city manager's office and look at the city manager report, it can be really, really helpful. The, I, I also totally agree with Counselor Gibson about the pledge. And for those who don't know about the pledge, it's sort of this concept where if you run for governor, you have to sign this pledge that there will never be an income tax and sometimes, or a sales tax, that there's never gonna be a broad-based tax, which means you can't even talk about it. I like to call it the gag rule, not the pledge. It takes off of the table just a conversation about any possible solutions we can have to being the dead last for state funding. I wish that we could incorporate some of those lawsuits into our budget, but as has been stated, we can't do anything until they figure out those lawsuits and hopefully we'll have an increase there that we weren't expecting, but unfortunately, we have to budget just with what we know that we are getting already. We also have really dedicated school board members who go to Concord and testify on our behalf, along with a lot of other school boards that go and say, we really do need this, here are specific personal examples from our district and why your very, very small amount is not enough. So I thank everyone for doing that. I hope that we have addressed some of the comments. I know there were some more specific questions, but hopefully you can, you know how to reach out to us. My email is just my first name, crystal@somersworthnh.gov. You can find all of our emails on the website. We love hearing from people. As much as people think we're inundated, we really are not. And I really appreciate people coming and sharing their, their thoughts. Just looking at the Just looking at the, this, which is our proposed budget for fiscal year 2526, which will be presented, is it ahead of the next meeting? Ahead of the, the public hearing? The city manager will go through, I highly recommend you coming. Usually, that's at 6:00 or 6:30, right before the, the city council meeting. And you'll see sort of general slides of, here's how much we raise from property taxes. Here's how much we get from county. Here's how much we get from the state. The school budget this year that's proposed has gone up 2.9%. The county has gone up 4.1%, and the city has gone up 6.068%. Of course, there's always increases. And there's, you know, a very interesting way to look at who gets more to increase and who doesn't. A lot of this is just in our charter and has to do with our tax cap. But again, just thank you so much for coming out and sharing your voice. And I hope that you'll see very tangibly that the, the dog leash laws have been really impacted by your input and, and the budget as well. And Bonnie, thank you so much for everything that you have done with the chamber. I really respect that your reaction to being dismissed at last year's budget hearing was, I'm going to, I'm going to prove that we really do a lot here. And everything that you do with the chamber, I think, is, has really been demonstrative of how necessary the chamber is going under Dover. I don't think is the way to go. And I really appreciate that, that. We loved Dover. But our downtown Summersworth is right next door to Berwick's Downtown Summersworth. And this connection that we have with the Berwick's is so much more beneficial. And just being able to go right across the bridge and having the business owners really know each other, it's really, really helpful. So I'll end with that.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Pepin.
Yes, thank you. Very quick, thank the public for coming out and giving them the comments tonight. I, I do hope that you do attend some of the school board meetings and voice your opinions. I think what ends up happening is, is that, I sat on the board as a council representative on the city, on the school board for a while. And there's people that show up there, but they have students and they're involved in, in there. And those are basically the only people that show up at school board meetings. And they don't share the same, don't get the same comments that you gave us tonight. I think the school board needs to understand what the impact is or what they're asking for that is, that is being put onto you people. And I hope that you show up there, because I can guarantee right now, when it comes time for us to pass a school board budget, they'll have their students and their, their parents over here expressing their opinions. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Mishu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to state that all the comments that the other councilors made, I agree with. They did a really good job. So I'm not going to rehash a lot of that. But I have to admit that some of the comments that Counselor Vincent made, I have to admit, they're pretty close to being spot on. So what he said is really worth listening to. But my point right now is, I really want to thank everybody that showed out this evening to speak to us. This is exactly what I personally want to hear as a counselor, to know what the citizens expect from us and what they want from us. So once again, I can't thank you enough, but thank you.
Thank you. Other counsel comments? Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you. I also wanted to echo my support of the community coming out. We love hearing from you. It's very useful to hear your feedback in our decision-making. I wanted to share a little story around the pledge. I'm a Summersworth townie. I was born and raised here, went to Summersworth Schools, went to NH, had the opportunity to go to grad school and get my first job in Boston. And I was fortunate enough, through that experience, to be able to buy property there in 2019, own a condo in the city, lost my job during COVID, found a great opportunity in New Hampshire at the same time, and moved back home. Kept the property as an investment property and was able to buy a home here in Summersworth, a dream. I bought a home on, in the neighborhood I grew up in, on the hill. So I have insight as a property owner in Taxachusetts and in the pledge, New Hampshire. And I can tell you that my overall tax burden in Massachusetts was lower than it is in New Hampshire. And I paid a 5% flat income tax on a six-figure salary. And I had a condo that was worth 40% more than my home in Summersworth. But my taxes on that condo, while I was owner-occupied, were six times less, six times less. I'm no longer owner-occupied in that unit, so I get, I get taxed at a higher rate, because it's an investment unit. And now it's just four times less than my tax bill in Summersworth. 40% more valuable. So, you know, I think a lot of people in New Hampshire look down on Massachusetts for the bureaucracy. And like, trust me, I get components of that. But I don't think their tax structure is what I would nitpick. One of the things that I really like, and I will challenge all of those that came out to spoke tonight, to, you know, not just engage us, but gauge your state-level elected officials, because the pledge is bullshit. And that we need statewide change to enable communities to get the funding they need. There needs to be a broader base of, of individuals contributing. You know, it's a dirty word, but let's be realistic. We have to redistribute wealth. And the efficient way to do that is at a broader scale. If you are a poor working-class community, as Summersworth has historically been, and we have made many strides forward, we are challenged to do that effectively. And it is, it is a constant burden. And those towns with means are able to continue to, to save and prosper. And those towns that are struggling to get ahead will struggle to get ahead, because there's no way to break the cycle easily. So I encourage you guys to be active at all levels of government in trying to break that cycle. You know, one of the things I'll point to, just to echo some comments from the public, is I completely agree that it is a shame and, you know, frankly embarrassing that state law requires us to assess property sort of value-free, right? So homes, homes, including mobile homes, have increased significantly. We are required to benchmark those, those properties to prevailing market rates based on data collected by third parties. It's not the city setting those rates, it's a third party doing that, and they're following state law. So I think those, those reassessments are fair. And if they're not fair, you have the opportunity to go and challenge them and to get that rate, your assessment adjusted to what is a fair market rate. And that happens also for commercial property. And so if home values rise at a faster rate than commercial property, as they have, because there's a housing crisis, then suddenly Walmart's tax bill is lower than the year before, while those with the least means, who had the highest increases in their property, because there is a housing crisis, have seen increases. And obviously, that's not right. Walmart's sales have not gone down, because the value of trailer, trailers and mobile homes in Summersworth have gone up. And that's an injustice. But there's nothing this council can do about that. We can, you know, make sure that, we can challenge our assessor, I suppose, to make sure that they are assessing commercial property at the, the correct market rate. But, you know, barring any evidence of the contrary, we, we trust that that is true. Yeah, that is an injustice of the system that the state of New Hampshire has in place, and it is ridiculous and preposterous, and I have no influence over it. So I share your frustration. You know, let's bring it to the ballot box at the state level and see if we can enact some change. I also wanted to thank Bonnie for coming out. I really appreciate your work. I completely echo other comments that I think you're the best thing that has happened in the chamber in a long, long time. And I hope that your many efforts continue to bear fruit and that it will continue to prosper in all the ways that we want it to, to continue to do so. It's going to be a long meeting, so I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our comments by city councilors. That will bring us to our communications section. We have none. Brings us to item nine, which is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof. For reference or otherwise, we have none. Brings us to item 10, which is the mayor's report. First up, I would like to thank our police chief, Tim Macklin, who is officially retiring this week. Congratulations. After three years at the helm of the, as chief of police for the city, and decades of service here to the city, you have certainly earned this retirement. So thank you. Thank you so much for your commitment to Summersworth, for everything you have done for the city to make it more safe and welcoming, your dedication to community policing, to officer mental health and wellness, and your kind, calm, and cool demeanor. All of these things have benefited not just the Summersworth Police Department, but also the community at large. So I cannot thank you enough. Thank you, really. Yeah. I'd also like to extend congratulations to our, our captain, John Sunderland, who will be our new police chief. So congratulations to him. That'll be a week from today, funny enough. I could not be more excited for you to join us in this new capacity, in this new role. Our community certainly is thankful for you to, for stepping up into this. You've been with the department for, I believe, nearly 16 years, all of which you have served with honor and distinction. Your experience not only here in Summersworth, but beyond and within the armed forces makes you such an amazing choice for this role. And again, you will bring with you not only tons of experience, but I know, energy, excitement, and a drive to continue to forward the efforts of our community and within the police department. So thank you, thank you for being here, and welcome on as the new chief soon. Yeah, absolutely. Next, I'd like to speak on the zoning ordinances, at least one of them. I'm happy to see, and this was kind of mentioned earlier, that we have the first of what will hopefully be a handful of zoning ordinance changes that are coming before us that are intended to help increase the city's existing housing stock. This change has come between a partnership between the mayor's housing task force and our city's planning board, who have been working together hand-in-hand for a number of potential changes. Tonight before you for first reading, amongst the zoning changes you'll see is ordinance 19-25, which is to amend Chapter 19, zoning ordinance, Section 19.24, accessory dwelling units, and Section 25 definitions, Section Z, Point D, dwelling units, accessory. So essentially, it's the piece of our zoning ordinance related to accessory dwelling units. This ordinance change, which was agreed upon by both the planning board and the mayor's housing task force, works not only to clean up our ADU ordinance by eliminating Section 19.24. K, and essentially makes this ordinance compliant with state law, but it also slightly expands the allowability of accessory dwelling units to allow for not only attached units, but also detached units. This is a simple and very impactful way to make more housing units available here in the city, without impacting density and neighborhood appearance. We all know how important it is to increase housing. We've talked a bit about it tonight already, which is great. And so with housing costs so high, I hope this is an easy way that we, as a city council, can begin to tackle this. And again, as I mentioned, it's the first of a handful of these things that will start coming before us. So I hope I can get your support in passing ordinance 19-point, or dash 25 at our next meeting. And with that, I'd also like to add myself as a sponsor to that ordinance as well. All right. And then my last piece tonight, and I'll try to be brief, because a lot has been said already about it, is about the city budget, all right? I want to first lay out the process for tonight, just so folks are aware. We officially receive our city budget tonight for the fiscal year 2025-2026. It is in the form of ordinance 16-25. Again, typical process for when we receive the budget. Tonight, it will have its first reading. All ordinance, ordinances within the city must have two readings in a public hearing, so those will come soon. But after tonight's first reading, which I'm hopeful the council will suspend rules to allow for it to be read by title only, because it's the city budget. After that, it is tradition that we then look to suspend rules once again for a second reading on that budget. And then lastly, I'll be looking for a motion to table the budget so that the budget can then stay on the table and allow us to work on it over time, over the next series of meetings that we'll have. All right? Again, this is the common practice we've used. So if you've been on city council before, you're probably familiar with it, but it's worth laying out for folks at home. There'll be a number of meetings upcoming that we've talked about, where we will discuss this. We have a weekend workshop where we'll be meeting about it and talking, and literally going through it line by line. And so I encourage everyone to stay abreast of all the upcoming meetings and potential discussions. My last piece, and I think this is probably just the teacher in me, so forgive me in advance, but I really want to let councilors know that I am expecting you all to have read the budget prior to our morning budget workshop on Saturday, April 5th, okay? I am expecting folks to have ideas at this meeting that you will share and discuss. I'm not looking for amendments necessarily, but what I am looking for is for you to out loud say the things that are in your head, okay? Things are often less smooth and productive when you surprise the council with proposals at the last minute. And I certainly can respect if those occur, because I know for certain, not everything goes as planned. But if there are proposals you are thinking about, if there are thoughts that you have, if you're looking to cut the schools, if you're looking to add a toll on Market Street by the bridge, so we can, well, we already know, we can't do that one. I'm just kidding. Right, exactly. Please, please, please have that ready for that workshop, so that when we get to that section of the budget, we can have open discussions about it. You can throw your idea into the ring. Councilors can take it, chew on it. And then when we begin to open the budget to make amendments, those ideas can already have been presented for folks to be aware of and have thoughts about, all right? I know that sounds a little just direct, but I want to be clear that that workshop meeting, I want to be an idea-sharing meeting. So please have read it, please be ready to discuss. I really don't want to sit for three hours and just go line by line without folks talking about it. And that concludes my mayor's report, simple as that.
Your Honor, if I may, just as, for median, meeting efficiency, in addition to the budget ordinance, which I agree we should read by title only, there are the four zoning ordinance amendments, which I'll make a motion to suspend rules when we get to new business, to read all by title only, because they are very lengthy red-line versions. If we read them all, John Sunderland would be chief by the time we're done.
I appreciate the foresight, foresight. Thank you, yes, I agree. All right. That brings us to reports of standing committees, which is item 11. We have our finance committee at first, Chairman Witham.
No report. Both Finance and Public Works are meeting next Wednesday, late in the afternoon. Stand by for an agenda on both.
Thank you. Next is Government Operations Committee, Chairman Mishu.
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is Economic Development Committee, Chairman Goodwin. Chairman Goodwin.
No report, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee, Chairman Pepin.
Yes, I do have a meeting. Met this evening here at 6:00 PM at the executive council's room. The only thing that we had on the agenda was ordinance 15-25, the dog ordinance. To give you a little bit of background before I go into the meeting a little bit, the day after we had our last council meeting, with all the concerns that was about the law, leash law, and the variable control, and all this and that, and my concern is that I had that all our ordinances and resolutions have to be approved by the city attorney to meet art, city ordinance, and New Hampshire RSA laws. I met with the city manager and tried to discuss how a game plan to try to figure out what is legal, what isn't legal, or what the, the next step should be. Talking to him, we come up with the conclusion that we take the whole chapter of the dog, dog ordinance and present it to our lawyer with the concerns that the city council brought up and the public brought up. We got a red-line version of it at our meeting tonight. The committee did approve 40 to accept the red-line versions of, of the changes. Outside of the last paragraph in Chapter 13, Section 4, on number 3, we wanted to put fines up to $1,000. To go further on this, we, like I said, we passed the 30. With your permission, Mayor, I'd like to have the, the the city manager basically go through what he had to say through the lawyer, so everybody's pretty clear, so it's one-on-one, and I don't have the minutes here, so.
Absolutely, without objection.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chairman Pepin. I did a little web search and printed out Nashua's ordinance, leash law, and Licoli's ordinances in regards to leash law, at least sections of it, and as well as the entire city ordinance, and also ordinance number 1525, to amend Chapter 13. And then I called the city attorney to discuss it with her and challenge her on why we couldn't pass a leash law. She, the light, as she says in her email, that you all have a copy of, a light bulb went off in her. that you all have a copy of, a light bulb went off in her head, and she was focused with her last opinion on the RSA that dealt with towns only. And there's a separate RSA that deals with cities and allows cities to be more strictive than towns are. So she provided a red line, which will incorporate, I actually told her Nashua's language looked pretty good, and she adopted Nashua's language as a recommendation. So there will be, we've eliminated that a dog can be under voice control. It has to be on a leash at all times unless there's certain circumstances like a off-leash dog park or on the owner's property. So, and we also incorporated, I asked her, the council was interested in having the enhanced penalties, so we kept in the RSA 466. Is that the right one? Yeah, RSA 466, which allows us to have the enhanced penalties for different categories. So that's all before you to perhaps consider accepting the public safety's recommendation and scheduling a public hearing for the next regular council meeting if that's in order. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council Pepin, you're still recognized.
I'd just like to make a motion that we have a public hearing. I'll put that on post that 6:50.
Thank you. Yeah, we will bring this forward when we get to old business, pull it off, up, vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, we will then have a public hearing at our next meeting. Does that sound good to everybody? Perfect. Thank you. All right. That brings us to, you were just Public Safety, right? That brings us to Public Works and the Environment Committee Chairman Witham.
Again, meeting next week.
Thank you. Lastly, Recreation Committee Chairwoman Cameron.
No accord, Your Honor.
Perfect, thank you. Brings us to Item 11, which is Reports of Special Committees. Are there any reports of special committees this evening? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I offer the following comments that was in my written report and packet for this evening's meeting. And jumping over to new business, Ordinance 1625, the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. My proposed FY26 budget and the school department budget has been submitted in accordance with the city charter. Again, we've scheduled a public hearing for Monday, April 7th at 7:00 PM. And at 6:00 PM, the city manager will give a brief presentation and overview of the proposed city budget. The superintendent and business administrator for the school will be here to give a brief overview of their school board's proposed budget. Next, Ordinance 1725 regarding Chapter 19 zoning, Section 21 circulation and parking regulations. The planning board voted to support this action. I provide you a memorandum from our Director of Planning and Community Development explaining these revisions along with the redline proposed of the proposed changes. And again, for all these ordinances regarding zoning, I recommend a public hearing at our next regular meeting, Your Honor. 1825 is in regards to new language in the zoning ordinance for places of worship and related religious facilities to comply with state law. Again, Director of Planning and Community Development, Michelle Mears, provided a memorandum that spelled out why we're doing this. Ordinance 1925, another zoning change, is the ADU that's been talked about by councillor and Your Honor. Ordinance 2025, Chapter 19, regarding Somersworth Plaza signage. The Economic Development Committee met on February 18th and voted to support this amendment. I provide you a red line showing this proposed amendment, and I recommend a public hearing at the next regular council meeting of April 7th, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. And just informational items, but everybody has heard already that Captain Sunderland, I appointed him to be our next chief of police effective March 24th when he'll get sworn in at the council chambers at 10:00 AM. That concludes my comments, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Item 13, which is nominations. I'm so sorry. I feel like never turned that thing off either. I will restart, just so folks who are watching live can hear. This brings us to Item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments, the following nominees are up for appointment this evening: Ken Hilton for reappointment as an alternate member of the zoning board of adjustments for a term of three years, and John Splain for appointment as an alternate member of the planning board for a term of three years. What are the wishes of the council? Councillor Vincent?
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce both applicants to be voted onto the boards.
Yep. Councillor Vincent moves to accept the slate of nominees, seconded by Councillor Gibson. Motion for the council is to accept Ken Hilton as an alternate member for the zoning board of adjustments for three years, and John Splain as an alternate member of the planning board for three years. Discussion. Yes, Councillor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I can't speak on the second candidate, but I can speak on Ken Hilton. I do serve with him on his EBA. He's a very logical thinker. He's very rarely not at meetings. I just think that he's a great source of information there, logical thinking, and I urge the board to put on both. Like I said, I can't speak so much for the second candidate. However, you know, as an alternate of the planning board, he'll truly be used. And I would just urge all councilors to vote him both in. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion, Councillor Vincent, excuse me, Witham, and then Goodwin.
Thank you. Just a question perhaps for the city manager. Is there a maximum number of planning board members? I hear Councillor Vincent saying he'll be used. I question that. We've run out of chairs at recent meetings, so I don't know. Is there a maximum number?
I believe it's nine that we have now. But it includes me and you.
Okay. So is this, so the alternate would fill one of the nine if...
Alternates. We have up to five alternates, I believe.
Sorry, up to five alternates we can have. We're not maxed out yet, is my understanding.
Got it. All right, just seems like a lot. So I'll be abstaining from this vote. I like the vote bifurcated. I don't like both together. Thanks.
Councillor Goodwin.
Thank you. I've met with John Splain. I think he's an excellent candidate as an alternate for the planning board. He has a master's degree in architecture. The planning board, in my opinion, is in desperate need of professionals, design professionals in the industry. I think there's currently only one on the board, a civil engineer. So having someone with a formal design education, I think is very valuable. I don't share Councillor Witham's concern for a deep bench of alternates. I think that's critical to make sure that we have folks that are willing and able to take on the task of a full planning board member at the soonest possible date, and I think it's a good sign of engagement. So I'll be supporting both of these nominees.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, if you're in favor of the slate of nominees, you will state by saying aye. If you're not, you will state by saying no. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All abstained.
One abstention. Thank you. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. Nominees are accepted. All right, that brings us to Item 14, which is items that have been laid upon the table. There are none. Brings us to our unfinished business, which is Item 15. First up, we have our Ordinance 15-25, which is to amend Chapter 13, Police Offenses, Section 4, Dogs, Regarding Revised Definitions to Include Dogs at Large. It sounds as if Ordinance 15-25 is ready to be brought out of committee. So having Ordinance 15-25 been read a first and second time is now open to further amendments. Councillor Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes, I would like to support the amendments in, I don't have a page number. I think it's a, oh, page number 12 of 80 in the city manager's packet, is redlined by the lawyer to strike the accompanied and at-large sections, to strike the or disposed of that we had talked about before, and to include, well, I'll read the new language under running at large. "It shall be unlawful for any dog to run at large. The term 'at large' means off the premises of the owner or keeper and not under leash or other physical restraint of the owner or responsible person, or not within the confines of the fenced area of an off-leash dog park." There's a new section, just updating the language around female dogs in season, and then just reaffirming that we are reflecting the escalated penalties of the New Hampshire statute 46631A. And the only amendment that I will add that is different from this redline is to include after a fine of not less than $100 to add and up to $1,000 per violation.
Just want to make sure, is the amendment clear to everyone on council? It's the redline as presented from the lawyer's packet with one inclusion of and up to $1,000. Correct? Per violation. Per violation, excuse me, per violation. All right, is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Barry. All right, so we have a motion to amend Ordinance 15-25. Is there a discussion? Yes, Councillor Witham.
I'm fully in support of the amendment. Unfortunately, because it's a significant change, it does have to go to a public hearing and drag this out even further, and I feel bad for everybody. Had the city attorney been on the ball, we could have avoided a lot of this rigamarole. And at first, I was not very happy with the city attorney, but as I went on my rant earlier tonight, there are 13 cities and there are 230 some odd towns. I get why she has the town slant in her head and didn't think that cities would be treated differently. Were treated differently in so many ways, some of which is good, some of which is bad, but maybe in this instance, it's good. So I'll cut the city attorney a little slack, but it would have avoided a lot of rigamarole had we gotten it right in the first place. Cities and towns, so that would be 230 towns.
Good math. Quick math. All right. Other discussion, Councillor Parity-Catanzaro? I saw your hand.
Yes, I just wanted to add, in addition to introducing the amendment, that again, like I thank the community members for coming forward for flagging this for us. It really raised that conversation of, wait, why did the lawyer tell us this if it appears other cities have done this? So I'm really pleased. I know this does, you know, just work at the speed of government, as it was said. But it's, I also think it's really important that since in the packet that most people looked at, the redline version wasn't in there, that it does make sense to have a public hearing just so that everyone in the public has that information readily available and can come and share their thoughts. So I appreciate that.
Other discussion? We got Councillor Barry and then Councillor Witham.
I'm very happy that we are able to have this law. I'm even more happy that we can charge them up to $1,000. That was my big hangup with the last one because again, I feel like habits don't change unless something makes you change, and I feel like the fines are that. So, very happy.
Councillor Witham.
I'll save it for when we vote on the full ordinance next meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Other discussion on the amendment. Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of the amendment to Ordinance 15-25, you will state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
And Gibson?
Yes.
All right, the amendments to Ordinance 15-25 have been adopted. We will put this ordinance on hold for now. So with the significant amendments that we just made, I think we've all decided, or could agree, that we do need to have a public hearing on this. That will be scheduled at our next meeting, and we will put this on hold till then. Probably should table it.
Motion to table.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Witham makes a motion to table, seconded by Councillor Vincent. All right, the motion before us is to table Ordinance 15-25 until our next meeting. Discussion?
Non-debatable.
Oh, true, thank you. All right. Motion before us is to table Ordinance 15-25. If you're in favor, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. We have tabled Ordinance 15-25 for the time being. Thank you. All right, brings us to our resolutions. Under unfinished business, chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 42-25 to authorize the city manager to contract with GMI Asphalt, Inc. of Belmont, New Hampshire for fiscal year 2025 road resurfacing improvements, which if approved would allow for road improvements on Flynn Street, Willand Drive, Granite Way, and Woodchuck Lane, an amount not to exceed $1.5 million. City clerk.
Resolution 4225 to authorize the city manager to contract with GMI Asphalt, Inc. of Belmont, New Hampshire for fiscal year 2025 road resurfacing improvements.
Thank you. Resolution 42-25, having read a first and now second time, is open to further amendments. No amendments being offered. I'll look for a motion on Resolution 42-25. Councillor Witham?
Move for its adoption.
Councillor Witham moves for the adoption of Resolution 42-25, seconded by Councillor Gibson. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 42-25. Discussion? Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 42-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Resolution 42-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 43-25, which is a vote to authorize the city manager to file an application to the state revolving fund for a loan to fund wastewater facilities improvements. City clerk.
Resolution 4325, vote to authorize the city manager to file an application to the state revolving fund for a loan to fund wastewater facility improvements.
Thank you. Resolution 43-25, having read a first and now second time, is open to further amendments. Seeing none. I will look for a motion on Resolution 43-25. Councillor Witham?
Move for its adoption.
Councillor Witham moves for the adoption of Resolution 43-25, seconded by Councillor Parity-Catanzaro. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 43-25. Discussion? Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 43-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 43-25 has been adopted. The chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 44-25, which is to authorize the city manager to accept an easement from the American Legion Post 69 associated with the Constitutional Way Complete Streets project. City clerk.
Resolution number 44-25 to authorize the city manager to accept an easement from the American Legion Post 69 associated with the Constitutional Way Complete Streets project.
Thank you. Resolution 44-25, having read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment, I'll look for a motion on Resolution 44-25. Councillor Cameron? Councillor Cameron moves to adopt Resolution 44-25, seconded by Councillor Vincent. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 44-25. Discussion. Councillor Vincent.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much to the American Legion Post 69. Not only do they going to grant us this easement, but they really do a lot for the city and the community in general. So thank you so very much, all the members and the veterans. We really appreciate it, and the auxiliary.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Councillor Barry?
Very fast. I just wanted to say I drove by the other day, and it absolutely looks great with the new street signs, lights being off of the walkway, and maybe taking that as a, we should do that in the future.
Other discussion? Seeing none. If you're in favor of Resolution 44-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
And Goodwin?
Yes.
Resolution 44-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 45-25, which is naming Wellington Place and assigning addresses as required. City clerk.
Resolution 45-25, naming Wellington Place and assigning addresses as required.
Thank you. Resolution 45-25, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Councillor Witham?
Yes, I'd like to amend the resolution under explanations number six, where it says "street sign," I would like that to be plural signs, and where it says "private way sign," I would like that to be plural signs. This is a horseshoe road, so there will be an entrance and exit in two different spots.
I think we can make that amendment without having to do the normal I think we can make that amendment without having to do the normal proceedings, without objection. I think those are pretty, pretty quick typo fixes. Thank you. All right, other amendments? Okay, seeing none. I'll look for a motion on resolution 45-25. Counsel Witham?
A motion to adopt with the clerical corrections.
Counsel Witham moves to adopt resolution 45-25 with clerical corrections, seconded by Counsel Goodwin. Motion for the council is the adoption of resolution 45-25 with clerical corrections. Discussion? Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of resolution 45-25 with clerical corrections, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. Clerk, uh, City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Caton Zero?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
All right, resolution 45-25 with those corrections has been adopted. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our favorite part of the day, I think. New business.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that council rules be suspended, that all five ordinances be read by title only.
I'll second that.
And, not done yet.
I apologize.
And that ordinance 16-23, the budget, be read a second time immediately after the first.
16-25.
I will still second that.
All right. So we have a motion before us to suspend council rules to read our five ordinances, 16-25, 17-25, 18-25, 19-25, and 20-25 by title only. And included in this motion is to have a second reading on ordinance 16-25, seconded by Counsel Vincent. Discussion? Seeing none. If you're in favor of the suspension of council rules, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. We have suspended council rules. Thank you. All right, I will look for a first reading by title only on ordinance 16-25, which is fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 16-25, fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Thank you. I'll also look for a second reading on ordinance 16-25. Now that ordinance 16-25 has been read a first and second time, it is open to further amendment. No amendment being offered. Counsel Witham, I look for a motion?
Motion to place the ordinance on the table.
All right, Counsel Witham has made a motion to lay ordinance 16-25 on the table, seconded by Counsel Gibson. Motion before us is to lay ordinance 16-25, again, our budget, on the table. Discussion?
Non-debatable.
Oh, right, I did that again. My gosh. I'm so used to the discussion. Not that I need you guys to talk more. I kid, I kid, I kid. Non-debatable. It will be a roll call vote, just for posterity's sake. If you're in favor of laying ordinance 16-25 on the table, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Caton Zero?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 16-25 has been laid upon the table. All right, brings us to ordinance 17-25, which is to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinances, Section 21 circulation and parking regulations. City Clerk, will you please read this by title only?
Ordinance number 17-25, to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section 21 circulation and parking regulations.
Thank you. Ordinance 17-25, having read it first time, will remain in first reading until our next meeting, at which time it will have a public hearing. Brings us to our next, which is ordinance 18-25. City Clerk, will you please read ordinance 18-25, which is to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Table of Uses, Table 4.8.2, Principal Uses 5, Places of Worship and Related Religious Facilities, by title only.
Ordinance number 18-25, to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Table of Uses, Table 4.8.2, Principal Uses 5, Places of Worship and Related Religious Facilities.
Thank you. Ordinance 18-25, having read it first time, will remain in first reading until our next meeting, at which time it will have a public hearing. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance 19-25, to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section 19.24, accessory dwelling units, and Section 25 definitions, Section Z. D. dwelling unit accessory. Thank you. Ordinance 19-25, having read it first time, will remain in first reading until our next meeting, at which time it will have a public hearing. Brings us to our last item, which is ordinance 20-25, which is to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section 19.20. D. .2. F. .I. Summersworth Plaza signage. City Clerk, will you please read this by title only?
Ordinance number 20-25, to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section 19.20. D. .2. F. .I. Summersworth Plaza signage.
Thank you. Ordinance 20-25, having read it first time, will remain in first reading until our next meeting, at which time it will have a public hearing. This brings us to item 17, which is comments by visitors. Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, the time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speakers shall not enter into debate with any person, the mayor, council member, city manager, or department heads. Does anyone wish to speak this evening? Anyone wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 18, which is closing comments by council members. Counsel Barry, you are up first.
Oh, lovely. I just wanted to say, I think I've been pretty voice stressed that this is my first budget season, so I really encourage people, just like we had tonight, to come. April 5th, I believe it's 6, no, sorry, April 5th is a Saturday, so it's at 8:30? 8:30, start. Come, come learn with me, come give your opinion. Honestly, like most of us have said, we really want to hear it, because...
It's actually not a public meeting.
Oh, well, when's the first public one? Sorry.
We'll have a, our next meeting, which is Monday, April 7th, we'll have our proposed budget presentation, at which time we'll have our public hearing.
All right, April 7th, please, please come. I just wanted to say, I am very sad to see our current police chief leaving. Thank you for doing such a great job, but I'm also happy to welcome our new one. I know this is all happening very fast, because we're also, again, going to be losing a city manager soon and having a new one there. So a lot of change coming to Summersworth, so let's just get ready for it all. One other thing I just kind of want to talk about, that I talked about a little bit earlier, is I think we're going to all be going through a very hard time with budgets and other things, not just at our level. I think a lot of funding's uncertain right now at state, at government levels, all across the board. And I know it's not easy to say, hey, come volunteer, hey, give money, you know? It does take a toll on everybody. But I also know, I volunteer every Saturday at a nonprofit. Honestly, the days I don't do it, I feel like there's a hole missing, so it's surprising once you start doing something where it feels right, or that you actually can fit more in. So that's my only tidbit tonight.
Thank you. I will make a note that Saturday meeting will be televised, though, so people can watch it, so don't think you can't. All right, brings us to Counsel Peppin, you're next.
Yeah, Chief, hope you have a happy retirement. You make, it's making me feel a little old now. There's only two offices that are, that are still there, that since I retired, Officer Sloan and Captain DeVal. So I hope they don't retire shortly, because it's going to make me even feel older. So I hope you have a happy retirement. Thank you.
Counsel Vincent, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I had a conversation with you, Chief Macklin, at the beginning, and I remember the day where your father, who's over there on that wall, who was a great city servant, a great mayor, was so proud of you when you came out of the military and became a police officer for Summersworth Police Department, him and Joyce, and have a great retirement. And future Chief Sutherland, welcome aboard. I'm sure you're going to keep crushing the crap out of crime, which is great. I don't want to keep, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I just want to be clear on what I was saying earlier, that we had a system here that was in motion for years, where we had Lori Lane coming to this council with a really true budget. I don't want to lose track or faith of that with what's going on. I do have some concerns about our current school board, and I've already voiced them. I just wanted to make that clear again. I might not be the most liked counselor here from the school system, but that goes with the job, and I'm sure that in the end, everything's going to work out, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Gibson.
Congratulations to the Chief Honors of Retirement. Congratulations, Captain Sutherland, on your promotion. And I'll cut this short. Love budget season.
Thank you. Counsel Parity Caton Zero, you are next.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just pulled up the, the schedule for the budget, so Monday, April 7th, at 6:00 PM, the city manager will do the proposed budget presentation, and at 7:00 PM, the city council meeting starts, and that's where we really hope that folks will weigh in with their discussions, et cetera. As was mentioned, the Saturday, April 5th, at 8:30, meeting that we all have, we would appreciate everyone's comments sooner rather than later, because we'll be talking about a lot of ideas at that meeting. I do, there, well, there's a couple of things I wanted to add. I think that'll, I'll save those for future agenda items, but just some things that were brought up this evening that I think are really worth adding to, to our future committee work. And yeah, I, I take Counsel Vincent's comments to heart. I like an independent review as well. We had an independent review over the last couple of years, which resulted in the very corrupt system that was here currently ending. So I really appreciate what the new school board has been able to do. That's all.
Thank you. Except Counsel Mishu.
Thank you. I want to thank Chief Macklin for all he's done for this community, and congratulations on your upcoming retirement. I wish nothing but the best for you in the future. And I also want to congratulate Captain Sutherland on being appointed as a new city police chief. If you need anything, you know you can speak to us anytime. We're here for you. And Barney, I want to thank you for everything you're doing with the chambers. I know it seems unappreciative, but there are members here that really appreciate what you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Counsel Witham.
Thank you. I'll start with the congratulations on your retirement, Chief Macklin. I believe you did cross paths with my dad back in the day, so talk about feeling old, Counselor Peppin, right? That's been a long, long time. Your dedication to the city is, is, is evident, and thank you for all those years of dedicated service. And also congratulations to Captain Sunderland. I am a big fan of promoting from within, but not if it's automatic. I think there should be a process. I want the residents to know that the city manager had a very thorough process, where outsiders were invited to apply, and Captain Sunderland emerged through that. So checks both boxes in my, my book. So thank you for going through that, your energy to do that, and we welcome you into the new role starting next week. So, a couple of things for Public Works as we emerge from winter. I haven't started a spreadsheet yet, but I probably could, on the number of knocked over or crooked street signs, either from wayward cars, snowplows, wind, combinations thereof. I would note that Greenfield Drive stop sign, street sign, is lying on the side of Route 108. It has been since Saturday, so I could pick it up on my way home if you want, but it probably should be addressed sooner rather than later, along with a bazillion other signs. No lie, there's a hundred or more, right, citywide. And secondly, and I know we have a thin staff at Public Works, but the Christmas lights and the Christmas tree, could we maybe prioritize that? I, for one, that is a legitimate budget cut going, let's not put the damn things up next year, because they look terrible anyways. I will be supporting not funding that. So I'll close with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Goodwin, you are next.
That's a tough act to follow. I wanted to continue to echo everyone's comments and congratulating Chief Macklin on your retirement, and thank you for your many years of service. And also, congratulations to Captain Sunderland for your appointment. We look forward to having you as chief. Obviously, it's going to be a very difficult budget year. You know, I have not had a chance to digest the entire budget yet, but look forward to wrapping my head around it. We've heard the public's comments that it's been a difficult year with the reassessment. It's been a difficult year for many folks economically, independent of that reassessment. So, you know, I guess my general sense going into it is that it is a year to, you know, to, to save rather than to spend, to the extent we can. You know, in terms of the school, like I, you know, others may have heard me have also expressed, I suppose, interest in understanding how the school budget has either been maintained or grown, you know, despite declining, changing demographics, declining student population, you know, Rollins were leaving the SAU. I think these are all valid questions. And, you know, I, the thing that I struggle with is that I don't want to be a ladder puller. You know, the people of Summersworth funded my education when I was in the school system, and I was a special education student, and I would not be where I'm at today but for the fact that the schools were, you know, funded to a degree to enable me to succeed. So, you know, I'm committed to making sure that the schools are well-funded and that we are giving that opportunity to the children of today, even if less people in Summersworth have children, and there's pressure to cut the budget. I want to make sure there's a top-notch education. However, I also want the school board to explain to us and defend that, to make sure that we are doing right by the taxpayers. And I guess I'd also just say for the public that might not be cued into this, the school board are duly elected officials, the same as here on council. So in many ways, the public has already spoken on what their priorities are. If they have elected a school board that is setting budgets, that are informing, you know, the tax rate, in some ways, you know, that is, that is the public speaking, right? know, mindful of our, our tax rate and impact on, on folks here in town. So, a lot to consider this season. Happy St. Patrick's Day, folks.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, indeed. Counsel Cameron?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief Macklin, thank you for all your years of service to Summersworth, and even though you'll be retiring, you'll always bleed top of blue, and I appreciate that. And to Captain Sutherland, I know you'll do a great job moving forward and keeping everything on the move. Barney, thank you for everything you do, again, it duly is appreciated. I did have, I don't trust Summersworth, this past Saturday, it was kind of my kickoff. We collected 14 bags, we went over to the pond, we were on the liquor store side. I had the Women's Club of Summersworth come, I had a family with three young children come, and I had some old members and a few new ones. So, that was very exciting, so I call that my kickoff. But my big one is going to be April 12th, a Saturday, 9:00 to 10:00, and this is going to be the citywide cleanup. This is where all my counselors are going to be involved with their awards, and I'm going to have a little trophy for the counselor who has the most participant. I see you shaking your head over there, stop that. Everybody's going to join in, it's going to be fun. And if you have a good reason why you can't, I'm hoping my at-large counselors will take on a ward that they can't do. So, look forward to more, I heard that, I heard, um, I'll have more information as I finalize, suggestions on where to, where we're going to go throughout the city, and more information to follow next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Note, counselors, it'll be a very high bar for having a good reason for not being there, so.
Better be a good one.
Better be a good one. Doubleheader, yeah, you're going to have to owe us two rounds.